And saying what grade you're in and maybe one great thing you love about Bonny Lake High School right now. Put you on the spot. Absolutely, and some home games. Yeah, very cool. Congratulations. Thank you guys for being here. We appreciate you. All right, with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as stated? Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Administration recommends that the Board of Directors approve the consent items for November 15th as listed. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dent with some recognition of staff, students, and community members.
We're going to kick off the evening with Ms. Kelly Dent, our Assistant Superintendent, who's here to recognize a very special part of our school district.
Good evening, Dr. Dent and Board of Directors. It is my honor to be here tonight and recognize the remarkable dedication and commitment of the staff who support our Sumner Bonny Lake School District Native American Education Program, which is a collaborative effort between our district and the Puget Sound Educational Service District. So the staff's unwavering efforts have earned them the prestigious Superintendent Certificate of Excellence. So I'd like to start by introducing the staff and then telling you a little bit about the program. So first, I'd like to acknowledge Jason LaFontaine. So Jason is a member of the Turtle Mountain Chippewa Tribe. He serves as the Director of the Native American Education Program, and Jason has served an impressive 17 years in this role. So next, we have Teresa Washington with Lumie Knutsack Heritage. Teresa's one of our program coordinators. So she specializes in working directly with our students at the K-8 level, and Teresa has been an asset to our program for the last seven years. And lastly, we warmly welcome Susan Old Chief, and Susan is from Lumie Blackfeet descent, and she has joined our team this her second year with us. And she's also a program coordinator, and she serves students at the middle and high school level. So each of these dedicated professionals next to me embody our district's promise to know value and support our students. It's important to note that the program's staff often are the only Native American educators that our students will encounter in their educational journey. They serve as exemplary role models, and they work tirelessly to guide our students on their educational path towards graduation, all while preserving their cultural heritage. So a core objective of the program is to offer direct services to our students who have native heritage. They do this approximately one or two times per month. Currently, we have a little over 200 students who are served in the program, and they represent over 65 tribes across the country. So this program is open to any student in our district who has native heritage. So on any day, you can find Teresa, Susan, or Jason directly working with our students with both historical and contemporary lessons regarding Indigenous people. So topics are really tailored towards the age of the student, the grade level, and there's many different themes they cover such as tribal sovereignty, assimilation, boarding schools, traditional storytelling. It could be books that are written by a native author or around native character children's books. Then I think most importantly, what they do is that they foster a sense of connection to the student's heritage. So in addition to that, this team also arranges culturally relevant field trips. So they will arrange events like the Native Teachings Day at the P'ala' tribe. And then just, I think, a couple of weeks ago, Teresa and Susan took some elementary students to a basket weaving event with the P'ala' tribe. And then every other year, there's a leadership development field trip that they'll take our older youth on. So beyond student support, the program offers family nights throughout the year, uniting our local native families. And so at these events, you'll see they have dinner arranged, there are different types of native crafts that our students can take home, and then there's also community tribal members who are guest speakers at those events. So what's really important about the program is that they want to support all students in the district. So they really focus on how can they help administrators, us here at Central Office, cultivate a more inclusive educational environment? So I can call on them at any time, and they will provide necessary resources from curriculum needs, as well as they'll do whole class presentations so that all students can benefit from the teachings and the experiences that they have had. I know Jason specifically is great about sending us information when different significant events are showing up, whether it's Native American Heritage Month, which the month of November is, it could be Orange Shirt Day, you name it, and Jason is sending those to us. And they also, you've probably seen their faces if you've been out at events. I was just talking to Teresa and just in June at the garden party at Emerald Hills, Teresa was there at a little table booth where there was some different basket weavings. And over the years, Jason and Teresa have been at countless STEM fairs showcasing the salmon lifecycle to plant dies, and I don't even know what other things. You're always there to support us. So in closing, on behalf of the district, I just want to extend a heartfelt gratitude for all of the profound work that they do and the positive impact they have on our students' lives. The experiences that this program offers enables our students to celebrate their heritage. It allows them to embrace their identity with pride, and most importantly, it establishes those robust foundations and relationships that will continue to thrive in our students long after they graduate. So thanks to all of you.
While they're coming around to shake our hands, Jason, didn't you take a bunch of our kids to the Seahawks game one year? Okay, our next special recognition tonight is from Executive Director Michelle Lewis. And Mary Lee Hill Anderson.
All right, good evening, School Board of Directors. Tonight, Mary Lee and I would like to recognize our partners from KBTC and Puget Sound Educational Service District. So first of all, some quick introductions from KBTC. We have Sherri Stanton. We have Alma Chuiho. And from Puget Sound Educational Service District, we have Liz Chick and Ariely Dominguez Maya. Welcome.
Okay, surprise, I'm speaking, folks. Surprise, Dr. Dent. Board members, Dr. Dent, it's just a wonderful privilege to be able to come and speak to you this evening about the Latinx Family Advocacy Project, which started as an effort to provide bilingual and bicultural support to our Spanish-speaking families, families who speak Spanish as their first language in our community, but has grown through numerous partnerships and other smaller grants to become so much more. And you can see the partnership behind me right now that we have with just outstanding, wonderful, wonderful people who love our students and our families. Just a word of context for you, and yes, I now have to put on my glasses. Even with 14-point font, I'm putting on my glasses. But so a few years ago, Liz Chick, who has been a longtime colleague of mine, reached out to me. We're both imagining the hours of grant writing here, but she reached out to me and she said, "What would you think about ESD writing a grant to Pierce County Human Services to the Youth Violence Prevention Fund and funding a position that really could promote ties between schools and students and families, especially those families that speak Spanish? I really think you need that in your area." And it took me about, I think, half of a millisecond to say, "Yes, please, let's do this," right? So many weeks and several dozens of hours later of grant writing and researching, Puget Sound ESD received full funding for this program. And I'm just going to stop there because, Liz, you just worked yourself to death on that one. Thank you so much for pursuing the grant. It's really important, again, for you to know, this was ESD coming to us, offering to write the grant and offer this support. The district is not funding this per se, this program. So we got the program, we went through a couple hiring cycles until we found the very perfect person, Ariely Dominguez Maya, who came to us, and we are so blessed by you, my friend. The purpose, again, was to really build those bridges with families that we were struggling to connect with. I really want to thank Beth Dykman too for her support and buy-in to this program. Our Family Resource Center offers office space for Ariely, and our Family Center budget offers about $3,000 in support for her program costs, while the grant funds like the other 99% of what's happening here. ESD has written more proposals as well to keep the program going and expand the program, especially with KBTC as well as with parent leadership. I'm going to talk about that in just a second. Ariely hit the ground running. She worked side by side with Ada Cortez to get to know the families that were already coming to our center. Think about this, of the thousands of people we serve, about 40% of our families who are coming regularly to the center speak Spanish. So we really needed to enhance our support. Ariely also visited our schools and met counselors and staff to encourage referrals, right, to the program. Those relationships started to grow, and the program, which initially consisted of parent nights and being active at community events, really took off. And I'm talking about three families, five families, 10 families that wouldn't initially come to a parent night, to over 100 families now being involved with this program. In fact, she's served almost 200 students, not families, but students this year, unduplicated contacts. So we're just so blessed. And Ariely, I really want to put the spotlight on you right now in a positive way, positive way, because you have been masterful at helping students and families feel comfortable. You have built trust with them, you've encouraged them to participate, and to really build a sense of community. And that community, again, includes being engaged with our schools. She is sending the message that schools are safe and school staff care about your children, and that's been echoed over and over again. And when schools have struggled to communicate, excuse me, parents struggle to communicate with us, you have really engendered that sense of trust and empowered parents to also speak out to us and really to advocate for their students. I have a story to tell you about that too. And what's even better is that with the grant funding that Ariely and Liz has
have pulled in, that we now have a 10 parent leadership. So it's not our own type of program. It is, you're in the balance saying, we would like this happen, right, with parent nights? And then everything from piñatas to speakers about providing our child enrichment program and why it was important to speak to sign up for that resource, right? There's so many topics that is covered, but we just want the specific and more about getting the following. Exactly, Ariely even created a focus room that gave input for our best people. The program and the support students receive as well as what we do to engage and support families. And I'll close my comments here because Michelle's going to talk about the partnerships with KBTC. Ariely, one of the most special kind of things that I'm thinking about right now in terms of good support for our families. I had a call from Ariely, nine o'clock on a Saturday morning, and she said, "Mary Lee, I'm not quite sure what to do. I know a mom, this mom has called me, and she's got pneumonia, and she just went to the emergency room, and they turned her away because she has no insurance, and she didn't have $300 to pay for the service. And if she doesn't go to work today, she's going to lose her job." And this mom has had violence from another area and was a single mom of a child at one of her schools that had really been struggling. They've been through a lot of trauma. And Ariely and I talked it through, and Ariely talked to the parents who was able to get downtown to a health clinic. And guess who opened up a health clinic in order to help this student? Kim Sales, Air &amp; Peace. Not only did she open up that clinic, she called one of her friends who was bilingual assistant, interpreted for Kim to be able to assess the mom and help her and give her right medication. And then during that time, we were able, my son and I, to get down to the clinic. We were able through Google Translate to get to know mom a little bit, and got her back to Druxford where she could get prescription medication. And by the way, ladies and gentlemen, board members, sometimes we send Spanish-speaking parents who don't know how to read in English, they have their own language, but not English, to pharmacies and to places to get a little medication that's all written in English. That was a huge wake-up call for me. I mean, when we think about what we need to build bridges between our families and the services they need, it takes real people with real time linking arms with our parents and helping them to make that happen. So as a team, we were able to make it happen that day. Mom got well, mom kept her job, the child is in school and is actually selling and receiving award last year for his academic progress. Folks, that's how it works. It truly, truly takes a bridge. And Ariely, Liz, and others, we couldn't do without you. So thank you so much.
Well, I wanted to highlight this one of the many partnerships that Ariely is responsible for in the work. So tonight, I want to highlight the work that we are doing with KBTC. And in particular, to tell you a little bit of how incredible enrichment programs that they're doing with our students at Academy Elementary, both during the summer and after school. So the summer program started two years ago. They started with humble beginnings at Sumner Middle School at the Family Center, but demand quickly exceeded the amount of space. And so last summer, they moved to a much larger space at Daffodil Valley. Let me tell you, this was an incredible Latinx-focused bilingual STEM summer camp for our elementary students, totally free for our families, and students had the best time. So in addition to amazing STEM experiments such as solar-powered smores, I mean, who wouldn't want to have that for us, Zach? Students got to work with Latinx members of community artists and musicians, and they just had the best time. At the end of the week, they culminated with a family dinner. And we are super excited, based on the success of the program over the summer, that we are going to expand and offer an after-school program sponsored by KBTC. So two days in a week, after-school Daffodil Valley, again, totally free enrichment program for our Latinx families. So we're so thrilled to have such culturally responsive programming for students, to be able to have bilingual staff members work with our students after school and just continue the learning all day long. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all of your incredible work, and Ariely, for making this partnership possible. We couldn't have done it without you. All right. In our excitement to tell you about KBTC, I neglected to share with you a video which highlights their programs. I'm going to go ahead and share that with you now.
Learning Neighborhood is a program of KBTC Public Television that reunions families that speak Spanish in rural areas in this valley of the P'as to learn, to engage, and to create a sense of unity within the community.
I hope my students are participating. My students are good at the activities they attend. Obviously, to be here, to be around, to be part of the community.
I mean, they're just trying to expose a form of polita, to spend time with them and to learn. Learning Neighborhood is an initiative dedicated to the development and success of children through self-awareness, the critical thinking, and the commitment. Something that is unique to KBTC is that it is creating for us a sense of community. For example, to bring the families up in the schools, to have cultural activities, to enrich the resources that are not in this area. We are responsible and working to bring them here, to let them not have to leave their communities. And also, the students are taking additional help with STEM activities that include an cultural aspect that many programs don't have. This initiative has helped me a lot because I am more connected with the education of my children. They are learning something, and they are learning from their parents, where this support of the parents and the children becomes stronger.
Learning Neighborhood is possible thanks to the funds provided by Ready to Learn CPB and the contribution of other community partners who believe in empowering all students of all ages.
For us to have just a taste of what it's like to be a little technical learner listening to this video in Spanish.
One more special recognition for tonight. Many people in this district have heard me say that we honor and take time to honor those that have come before us, those that are with us, and those who are leaving us. And you just love this moment right now. This is Rick's kind of thing. But we do want to take just a moment out of this board meeting to honor and recognize the work that Board Member Rick Hendricks has done for this district and for the children, for our students, for graduates. His work as a board member has had a true impact, a profound impact, on how we have built this district together. So we have a few things for you tonight that you're just looking forward to right now. So when you came in, you saw some balloons, Rick is a big hockey buff, we know this, so we're kind of using the Kraken as a little bit of a theme. But our first celebration tonight, Rick, you have always been a champion of Daffodil Valley Elementary. When we went through a boundary change, you and Deb Morris were the two board members that went over to that school, and you greeted those parents because you know the value that that school brings to all students. We appreciated your strength, your character, your integrity when it came to challenging decisions that were having to be made. And some of those decisions, parents weren't happy about, but you stood firm in that decision. So what some precious little dolphins did for you at Daffodil in Mr. Moore's third-grade class is they made you a daffodil to keep with you and to remind you of the great work you did for their school. So this is from Mr. Moore's third-grade class. That feels interesting, but precious nonetheless. Do you want to like, want this now? Okay, all right. The other, you know, Beth, she baked you some bread too. I gotta tell you, Rick loves this bread. So she, did you make it two loaves of bread?
Yeah.
One with chocolate chips, one without. One with chocolate chips, one without. So just your little prepping stuff, but two loaves, two loaves of bread, all for you. So thank you, Beth. Appreciate that. Dr. Emmett has something for you.
So this is just a school board recognition plaque presented to Richard Hendricks. In grateful appreciation for the years of your service, your vision, leadership, and dedication that guided us through challenges and triumphs like enriching the lives of countless students and families with deep respect and profound gratitude. We acknowledge your remarkable contributions to the Sumner Bonny Lakes School District and its students. Thank you.
Last but not least, Rick, I wrote you a poem. There's a lot of my Rick, just don't start with the man from Napucket. However, it does mirror the book from Dr. Seuss, So the Places You Have Been. Hold on, and you gotta bear with me because I am not a poet. I mean, it was hopefully a little funny, and it captures some of the moments that you have led this district through, but it's called "Oh, The Places You Have Been." So let's, again, I mean, give you a little bit of Latinx here. In the land of school boards, a tale unfolds of a board member named Rick. The story is told, for 15 years with grunts and great cheer, he replaced Tony Frohling, a true pioneer. Now, as we look back on all those long years, we see a tapestry woven with laughter and tears. Through future-ready dreams and Vision 2020's gaze, during Rick's tenure, we danced through a maze. A district name changed. Yeah, a symbolic shift, hiring four superintendents, each with a gift. Graduation rates soared, oh what a feat, new programs are sprouting, a career-ready seat. A Parks and Rec move, a change to embrace, boundaries revised, transforming our space. Requirements shuffled like cards in a game, the McCleary decision, a new rule to tame. A labor stoppage, a storm to brave, COVID's arrival, a tumultuous wave. A viral tornado swept in with great might, closures and masks, a pandemic's bite. Online learning became the new norm, and Sumner Bonny Lake, it was a digital storm. COVID's tail brought challenging years, but in Rick's world, resilience was clear. Equity and race issues profound, and Sumner Bonny Lake, solutions were found. Capital projects danced a complicated rhyme, budget cuts came at challenging times. Protests, they echoed a clamorous cheer, but Rick kept the pool open. He never had fear. Amidst the flames of the summer great fire, a community united, rising higher and higher. On many a task force, a member he stood, navigating complexities, doing what's good. Future ready in hand, his compass so true, 15 years of impact come shining through. So in echoes of laughter and many lessons learned, a chapter includes a legacy earned. Thank you. I tried to include the water bottles, but I couldn't make it work. Yeah, he can, he can breathe this to his grandbaby that's coming. Oh boy, please don't let that boy go to my child. It's got to be a panther's fart. Great. Great.
You know, yeah, I've been here for fifteen years. And through a lot of change, like when I look, when I sit here, I look at pictures behind there. Tony's the third guy, and I've been through everybody else that's up there. You know, and I will say, this school district is probably in a better place than I've ever seen it. Kudos to Lori, she's brought in some tremendous people. We used to call this North Korea, because if you weren't around here, you weren't getting in here. But that all changed, and the people that have come here, they've brought fantastic ideas and knowledge. And I think it's really made the district a better place. I think in my time here, I think they remodeled, rebuilt every school in the district. And it's just, it's been fun, like I say. A lot of different board members have come and gone. And the thing about everyone of these board members, they're here for the reasons they believe are what the, what the district needs, and I applaud them for that. I don't obviously agree with everybody, but I applaud people that get on the board, bring their opinions and views, and do the right things. Yeah, I will miss doing this. I miss some of the people. Like I say, there's sort of fantastic people here. And somebody sent me something, then I'm going to be quiet. I'm gonna state this last couple of things, because I always like a little humor. And I try to be a little, be with them. Yeah. I'm old enough to know that I replace, I'm cocky enough to know it's gonna be a downgrade.
So when I first got on the board, I had a meeting with Craig Spencer and Sarah Johnson. And they were seeing, they were seeing with Starbucks, and they were convincing me on what a kind heart he had. And the only reason I mention that is because we had kind of a rocky start at first. And I thought, well, I gotta find this kind heart. And it really didn't take long. I'd taken a lot of cookies. Brownies, and a lot of cookies. But I think, I think that we've learned to grow a mutual respect. We did not always agree, but there were a lot of times we did agree. And I'm grateful for working with you. And you brought a wisdom and a history that was very needed. And hopefully, somebody won't say that about us anyway. Anyway, thank you.
Just really quickly, I would say, it's been a pleasure working with you. It's been a gift to know you. You've been a total butt sometimes, but you've answered that with a big heart that you don't want to lose. So at the end of the day, you show up, and you've helped me out fifteen years or so. And sometimes, you've been a louder voice than others in that class.
You wanna say that grandbaby?
Yeah, exactly. Alright, anybody else? Before we partake in a gig.
I'll just say that I echo, it took a while for Rick to kind of warm up to me. Because he's, believe it or not, he does have a kind heart, and he's rather guarded. But once he warmed up, I really felt that, almost like an internship. There were times early on, you guys know, lots of sharp edges, they get kind of polished off. And as a board member, you grow into the role. I still grow, but I appreciate your input. Great, thank you.
We're gonna, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was good. Yeah, it's great. Thank you for stepping up. It takes a lot of time and courage for people to do this role, and it's not easy. A lot of friends coming in, generally, they always have a lot of friends they didn't trust. People don't know, any decision somebody makes, somebody's on that. So, thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
We're gonna go ahead and take a break. We're gonna take five minutes. Five minutes, five-minute break. Sorry. I'll go ahead and take a break.
Yeah, lots going on in the district lately. It's falling full motion. The kids are out there treating recently. For me, it was more about these older seniors. Last night, I attended Senior Parent Night, which is always a big eye-opener for those who have been through the senior at the time. It's exciting, it's not fair. And trying to just look for the bright spots, because you know, they're gonna be gone soon. So I joke around with my daughter, that's looking forward to that, I remember me. But it was really a great presentation. They did a great job of giving all sorts of information about what the seniors should be doing right now. Most importantly, how the board is here at us. But really, the nuts and bolts of everything from going right into the workforce. What does that look like? If a student wants to go into military, how do they take the testing? School offers the test for recruiting as many times as they want. As soon as you go take it, another recruiter, guy at Cox, they can. So just those details like that, I think not everybody's aware. As well as, you know, make sure filling out the FASDA. If you're heading off to four-year or two-year or vocational school, because it matters for every single level of that. And it was just a really good presentation. Really appreciated the time the staff took after hours to warn all those parents and everything. At the same time, the parent-teacher calls. It was just really neat, and I really appreciate it.
I don't know if all of you know, but we have the Lhasa Conference actually starting tomorrow. And I'm really looking forward to that for a multitude of reasons. And so stay tuned to that, and we'll hear more about it when we come back. The other thing is, is that I didn't get to go to senior night or whatever, but I do have a granddaughter, and that's pretty exciting. She's born on Halloween. Yeah, right. Girl, he is a hospital, and my husband and I dressed up as dinosaurs. And then we're treating our, her big sister who's dreaming. So we have Alexis, Eleanor, Norris, Heather. Nothing like four names. It confuses everybody that they're strengthening and knowledge. So anyway, that's, that's.
One last thing that I did, I went to, we had a deal with Steve and Beth put on at Victor Falls and the Middle School. We have board members. And this was for the kids that were trying to learn English. Am I correct on that? Because it was like, reading, you know, and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, it was one of the tougher ones to go to that I've been to and see. Because you're watching students, you know, trying to read. And then you think about, you're trying to learn this language. And then, I wonder, you know, how it impacts all the other classes that they go to. And I've said this before, you know, previous occupation, I had to go and learn a language in fifty-two weeks, eight hours a day, do a job. And then I think about how these kids have to struggle, you know, in all their classes. And they're just, when you see, I think they were third graders, was it third graders? And then, and then the older one, but it really makes you think about, you know, how, how much of a struggle it is for these kids to participate in their own classes, and they're still trying to learn how to read. So, you know, I have to say, of all the ones I've been to, it was the toughest one to go and watch. The teachers were exceptional. Patience was unbelievable. And I just, you know, it really made me think of these kids, your students. If, how much of a struggle it is for them to get everything done that they gotta do. And they're really struggling on the reading. So, I tell you guys, thanks for making the hardest one for me to vote in my last round. But it made me think for a couple days about how kids struggle, I think, you know. Because it was tough, tough watching the teachers there. And just what they were doing, but kudos to the teachers for, I mean, I mean, the one that did all this kind of stuff, I was really impressed with. You know, I couldn't, you know, but it was, it was good, but, but, I mean, what stuff, I've watched. Thanks for doing a good job, Beth.
He says, I liked how study session went, and then we went to actually see stuff live in person. That was really beneficial to me. See, learn it at a study session, and then go see it in action. So I hope we do that again. It has been a busy month, and it just, we've all been to these events, so it's kind of nice. We don't rehash any ground, but this last month, the Southern High School put on the production of Little Women. That was a fun event. Of course, my daughter was involved, so it's rolling. And we have Patricia Tamacya, who actually has been instrumental in helping get a booster club. Sorry, I don't call it prom anymore. The theater is going. And so, that is very difficult. I think at first, Patricia ran around, like, maybe they can do another booster club. All the other booster clubs were kind of like, no, we're exclusive. So they had to go form their own. So thank you, Patricia. With that said, on the theater front, I believe the Body Lake High School Theater Department is putting on production this week, weekend, right? Is Tony still here? I think it's this weekend, because I can't make it. But I think it was this week. Yeah. So, probably the best twelve bucks you'll spend if you want to take your, you guys can have it out and have a nice evening. Again, just kudos to the Southern School District, Southern Body Lake School District, and the high school. I was able to attend the bowling. Yes, one of my daughters, a couple of my daughter's friends are on the bowling team for the high school. And so, went down to Daffodil Bowl, and I was, I was pretty excited that we had that going. The kids all had fun. They had chants for each other while the rest there at the bowling. It was a real event. And kudos to Mr. Baines, he was out there supporting the kids, so that was good to see as well. Today was the Parent Leadership Council I was able to attend. And that at ten o'clock, Mary Lee always runs a good ship, when she doesn't, they're good meeting. At this meeting, they received feedback on the website, as well as feedback on other issues. I'd like to encourage the rest of the board to be on the lookout, hopefully, for more information from these parent groups. And I have a hint that Emory Hills Elementary, my elementary mother-in-law is as big or bigger than this present, so.
It's okay, I wanna, I just wanted to give you back what you guys talked about with the visits that Kelly and Beth had been promising to see and when. I really thought, I so appreciated how the induction of the study, some of the information, and dig into it and practice it, and then be able to go and see it in action the next day at the school. So it's so valuable. And you're right, the intentionality that we got to see with some of our kids who need some of the most support was really just a beautiful thing to watch. I felt honored to be able to be a part of that. I get to go to a lot of those because I'm working, and so having to be off and going to go is just so good. So, thank you for allowing us, you know, planning was into board visits, and there was a lot of prep from those schools, and so thank you so much for making that happen for us. Because it's just, it really is a gift to see it in action. And then really quickly, I took a picture, because I loved it. We walked into the classroom in a mountain view, and on the whiteboard, four, I think, different languages. I love this little one. That caught me off. If that's not an illustration of knowing, supporting who's in front of you, I don't know what it is. To greet people in their language, and to say, we see you, welcome, let's start our day together. Thank you for looking out into this event. Mr. Miller, I'm gonna be on the audience comments. Okay.
Absolutely. Next, we're moving to the audience comment portion of the meeting. Board recognizes the value of public comment on education issues and the importance of involving members of the public in its meetings. Comments from the public are taken under board advisement and may or may not receive action at future meetings. Topics including charges or complaints against employees, employment, or dismissal of personnel, acquisition of real estate, lawyer-client relationships, campaigning, or parameters for negotiations should not be discussed in audience comments. Other information, questions, or problems can usually be addressed by district staff. The audience comment period will end when all registered speakers have been heard. We ask that everyone adhere and understand the following guidelines. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other form of support or non-support to be used. The board will not respond to comments, but will take them under advisement. Speakers should be courteous and professional. Refrain from using profanity, vulgar language, threatening, or defamatory comments. As a reminder, individuals are not permitted to name a specific staff member, board member, or student during public comment. Failure to do so may result in the board president or designated being interrupting or ending the comment. The audience comment process is as follows. Speakers who registered by noon Tuesday, number fourteen, will be heard. If you provide an in-person public comment when your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name. If you're providing virtual comment when your name is called, you may be promoted to panelist. Take yourself off mute before you begin speaking. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Individuals have three minutes to speak, and I will signal you with the bell when one minute remains. Our first audience comment this evening is Isaac Kim. Isaac Kim does not appear to be in attendance. Our next audience comment is from Valvina Cortez.
Yes, sir. Buenas tardes. My name is Valvina Cortez, and I acknowledge this district's doing a lot of great work. But I wouldn't be here today if everything was good. First one for girls, and I'm here to talk about the lack of communication, the lack of transparency, the lack of accountability, the lack of implementation, and the lack in equity and education that I experienced. I reached out to most of you, I wonder if you guys remember the email, to ask about dyslexia. What I heard back was that you are not well-versed on the subject. That means that needs, there needs to be more awareness around dyslexia. Here's my experience. My daughter has dyslexia. I did the right thing by getting her an IEP when she was in kindergarten. An IEP written with the help of dyslexia advocates that pretty much spelled out what my daughter needed. Between kindergarten and second grade, my daughter wasn't making any progress. That was a failure to implement the ask. I have a stack of emails asking staff what curriculum, what activities, what methods were being used specifically for my daughter. The communication I received back was fun and engaging, activities that we The communication I received back was um fun and engaging, activities that we Google from the internet and worked since. Long story short, I decided to hire a lawyer. The lawyer asked for data and curriculum information. Suddenly, the district had ninety-five percent group curriculum and Kilpatrick assessments. Today, I, I was here earlier, when reviewing such curriculum. I learned that there's a staff member on the state dyslexia advisory board. Not sure if I'm happy because someone at the high level position is part of this advisory, or disappointed because even with such a great advocate. My daughter did not receive the help that I was asking. My question, how do we elevate the knowledge of this staff, staff member? So she can make a difference in the classroom, the issues, I still haven't received data from K two second, zero transparency, zero accountability. My third grade daughter is reading at a kindergarten level, zero equity in education. My question to you is, what is the plan to implement structured literacy? Also, what do I tell the parents that are asking? For guidance, do I tell them to lawyer up because that's what worked for me, and thank you, I'm sorry I'm nervous. And I'm very passionate about this subject, but I'm not great at public speaking, so, sorry, there goes. And I gotta go pick up my daughter at the Y school, I'll get you after this.
Thank you. That concludes audience comments.
Question of our agenda under policy matters. This administration recommends the board adopt the Polly district policies listed in your cabinet, do I have a motion to approve?
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? And then all of us, if you ever say aye. We have a first reading included for information in the link. For the uh, three policies listed there as well as the um.
I just wanted to ask a question on policy thirty-two oh three, uh prohibition of racial and ethnic harassment in students. Um, I know the policy committees are having a hard look on this since uh, we bring that up at the same time in last year. And having you write you the policy, there was one sentence that jumped out at me, I was hoping that um, but you get more clarification. The moment, if it's not possible, but at some point, um, it's, it's on the second page, uh, second paragraph, last sentence, and that sentence reads. Student speech or expressive activity that is offensive pervasive, generally not a sufficient basis to support finding a racial or ethnic harassment. So, as I was reading through the policy and then I got to that sentence, I kinda happened to stop and say, well, I decided, yeah, let's get something out of the policy. But there's this sentence that just didn't feel quite new, felt a little off, but for me, maybe I'm just out of the same, so. Who I can direct that to, all you want, take the question from the policy committee.
I'll try to answer, I might get you over to uh, area here in a little bit if I don't, if I fail or anything. But I don't think you're alone, Kevin, uh, that stuck out to people in the policy committee, meeting as well, and. That sentence is actually the paragraph that addresses uh freedom of speech and expression from students, and so it is a first amendment uh rights issue. And we all know that sometimes, you know, when you're expressing yourself, uh, sometimes you're not even. Meaning to offend somebody or, or upset them, but it happens. And I believe that sentence is there to say, hey, if somebody is expressing themselves and they inadvertently offend somebody, you know, it's not intentional, but they inadvertently. That is not necessarily going to rise to the level of finding a uh. You know, systematic harassment or things like that, so, but. Getting back to that first page, there's, you know, like four tests, and I think you just have to meet one of those, uh, where it's severe, or, you know, your student. Here's coming to school, grades are dropping, it's obviously something going on, so. That's a little different than a student that uh, you know, maybe just all of a sudden, wow, this kid really irritated me, so a little fess. Well, it's to encourage kids, hey, talk to each other, it's to encourage staff to maybe sit down and intervene and say, hey, well, let's, let's talk to that student. Is this student offending you on purpose, or is this something that we can use as an teachable moment? But I don't think you're alone, I, I think a lot of people read that uh paragraph, and then they go, that sentence, they go, what? So, it's, hopefully I've explained it somewhat, but it is a difficult one, Mary, do you have anything you wanna add?
I think when you look at the graph of the policy, the real test is on the first page, uh, A two B. And then um, you just have to meet one of those in order to qualify for the definition of discriminatory harassment. That sentence on the second page, I think you described it correctly, it's, you know, we're dealing with students. We wanna be able to educate and help them through and teach them, teach, that teachable moments, so they. One of mistake unintentional, maybe you deal with, but it rises to the level of A three B, one of those. Then we're going to deal with it as discriminatory harassment, so that is the real test on the first page, that it helps.
Definitely helpful, thank you, bringing this up is, I always, I tend to, it's sort of in this process. Uh, I would like to say for core as this, I know it's simply a document that I will forever be looking to update and improve, that it means it places each possible, so I'll all get it.
Stands us to the business matters section. Resolution oh five twenty-three twenty-four, administration recommends the board adopt resolution number oh five twenty-three twenty-four. Grant an endorsement assignment waiver for seventeen educators for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion to approve this recommendation?
Oh, move.
Can I hear a second? Oh, seven, any discussion? Paul?
For the last few years, that. That list of out of endorsement uh waivers has gone down tremendously. I was really excited, I think it was a one pager with just a couple people on last year, I thought that was a triumph. Now I'm gonna see a two pager going back up to seventeen, I, I'm just hoping that uh. Uh, I, I know you guys are still making an effort to keep it as, as minimal as possible, it is, is there something uh broader going on? Uh, whether it's a labor shortage or what, maybe, maybe you can answer it, maybe you can't, but.
Yeah, I can answer that, um, so no, it's not something broader as a labor shortage, I think one of the things that we're seeing, many of those names on that list. Are teachers who are CTE certified and eminently certified, see, and qualified to teach. Subjects of a technical nature who are teaching a sixth grade elective. That, and sixth grade is not CTE. And so, because they don't have endorsement outside of CTE, they have to be on that out of endorsement list. So there's quite a few who teach one or two periods out of their CTE endorsement. And it really does come down to the difference between, are they qualified to teach it and do they have an endorsement to teach it, and so we have a lot, most people on that list. Are qualified, have the knowledge to teach it, but may not have the specific endorsement, and in the case of sixth grade, it's just because CTE is not a sixth grade offering. So that's where you see most of those names on that list.
Wow. The last video, it prevents success, we're using that now, thank you.
Motion has been, can I hear second him? For the discussion, all of us in favor say aye, both, motion passes. This report recommends the board adopt resolution number oh six twenty-three twenty-four, and approve a transfer of one million dollars from the general fund to the cap. What did I say, said one, seven million dollars from the general fund to capital funds. Projects fund in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for land acquisition into Holly. Do I have a motion to approve? Seven million dollars from the general funds and capital projects fund, so. Can I hear a second?
All second.
Any discussion?
I would just say hats off to the team here at the building, uh, for financial boys, for, for when you're starting. Goodbye, if you generally have to grow and have more ability, so, it's, it's amazing.
All of us in favor say aye?
All in.
Close, motion passes. Right, the administration recommends the board adopt resolution number oh seven twenty-three twenty-four certification of the twenty twenty-four access. Access property taxes to be levied, twenty twenty-three collection in twenty twenty-four, which is a search general fund, capital projects fund, as service fund and providing for living matters. Do I have a motion to approve? Second?
I agree.
Any discussion? All of us in favor say aye? Both? The administration recommends that the board adopt resolution oh eight twenty-three twenty-four, release transfer obligation remaining balances on completed board approved projects. And we send the four hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred. Transfer obligation from the general fund to the capital project fund, do I have a motion to approve? Here a second? All of us in favor say aye? Oh, yes.
I just wanna give another hats off, this is somebody who does an amazing job, they come in under budget. Exactly what these dollars are, our projects that came under budget, and there are people in this room that do a lot of talk, that's.
Add motion passes. Alright, resolution number oh nine twenty-three twenty-four, the district negotiations team recommends approval of the value negotiation resolution agreement. Under the specific terms and conditions there to between the Southern Bonnie Lake School District. And the Orange School District will link to certain boundary petitions associated with it to Holly. Do I have a motion to approve? Can I hear a second?
Thank you.
All of us in favor say aye?
Okay.
Both? Next recommendation, the administration recommends the board adopt resolution number ten twenty-three twenty-four, acceptance of permissioning report. For summer high school modernization, it's next, do I hear a motion to approve? Second?
Third.
Any discussion? All of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, passes. The administration recommends the board adopt resolution number eleven twenty-three twenty-four, final acceptance of search and completion, summer high school modernization expansion. Do I have a motion to approve this second mission?
So, move.
Can I hear a second?
Thank you.
All of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
This brings us to the instruction, this is the question. Recommendation is for, uh, well, the administration recommends the board adopt the following instruction materials for sports medicine. Paddle essentials of athletic management, do I have a motion to approve? Second?
I agree.
Any discussion? All of us in favor say aye? Close? And motion passes. For your information only, we have a first reading for um. The title, the click, um, Director of Secondary Instructional Services, Cassie Lee, would you like to introduce this instructional material, or would you like me to? I will be happy to do it, thank you. I know, your card, carders, you, uh, definitely. Darla Offner, thank you, I'll come.
Alright, thank you, Board Director and Dr. Dins, uh, I am Darla Offner, I'm the elementary director of curriculum, and I am here with the great. Cassie Lee in her new role as secondary director of curriculum, we just wanted to get our faces in front of you and let you know that we are. The new uh co-facilitators of DCIMC, which is our district curriculum review committee. And uh, I wanted to call us the DCIMC gals, but I, I didn't, it didn't sound right, so. Uh, anyway, we just wanted to get you to get familiar, we're gonna be the, I, I know you probably, um, if you've been here a while, um. Dr. Lindsay Labardo was once here and did this, Steve has been kinda standing in this role, so. You're gonna get used to seeing our faces when we have curriculum to bring, uh, recommendations, and have you had one for secondary?
So, thanks Darla, um, so what you have for the first reading is cognitive, and it is an IB curriculum for a. Business and marketing class, I just wanted to give you a brief little piece uh to let you know why we're needing to adopt a new curriculum, and it's because. Um, we, IB replaces our curriculum or updates our curriculum every so many years, and they have done this while we have not been having our IB business and marketing class. Um, we have a new teacher that's taking it on and with, um, has a full class of thirty students, and so it's very exciting, and um. One thing that I want you to know about, it's an online curriculum as you peruse through it, and what we're excited about is that in business and marketing, there's continual movement and updates. And by it being online, they can continually update it, and it's not kind of a dead text, but when you're working with business, so. You have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer them, and.
Alright, so Lois is here, I'm executive director of learning and innovation, and will be presenting information regarding the multilingual program on. Thank you, I'm May May once again, um, I wanna start um for a moment with some introductions, while I may be a familiar face. I am here with somebody who may be a new face to some of you, so. Well, hello, everyone, my name is Suzie Beers, you're the head, and I am the multilingual TOSA, so let's keep her on special assignment. Um, I've been in the district for six years now, I'm from Oregon, but um, I taught at Sumner High School prior to this, um. I taught IB and English as well, so um, tutor English, and with that, I was responsible as the medical coordinator in the building, so. Um, yeah, now I'm working with this people. Thanks Suzie, we are thrilled to have Suzie joining us this year to support our multilingual program. Alright, so, I'm gonna start uh our presentation uh today by um just reminding everyone of our district, um, this week really. Anchors our multilingual program in all of our work, it's really important to acknowledge tremendous assets that. Our multilingual students um come to us with, being multilingual is truly a superpower. Uh, the research would suggest that students who are uh learning a language while they're very young, um, actually have the. Enhanced cognitive skills, enhanced reasoning, problem-solving skills, and um better intercultural communication. Uh, our multilingual students come to us with a rich history, a variety of languages, they represent over seventy-five different languages. Uh, they have very rich uh cultures and traditions that they share with us. And uh, I also want to acknowledge like some of the challenges that um they have heard of or even experienced in some of that your recent visits. Um, in past board presentations, you've seen data, you've seen the opportunity gap between uh our native English speakers and our multilingual students. And we acknowledge that there is an over-representation of uh multilingual students. Who are also served in special education and who receive free and loose lunch, so these are all things that we need to take into account as the um. Great learning experience for them that really amplifies their strengths. Uh, so, this evening, Suzie is going to start out our presentation, and. One of our goals is for you all to experience some of the instructional strategies that our teachers use uh with their multilingual students in their classrooms. And um, what we have found is that these strategies are just really great learning strategies, not just for multilingual students, but for all of our students. And what we have found is that these strategies are just really great learning strategies, not just for multilingual students, but for all of our students. So we hope that you feel that in your experience tonight. So I'm going to turn things over to Suzie. Okay. So as you can see, we have our content and language objectives and for our multilingual students, it's really important that we are focusing on the language, the academic language that we want them to learn. And so for you guys, I'm going to do a little lesson to kind of help you understand some of the terms that you're going to hear in Michelle's presentation. So first thing, our content objective for today is for us to share background information with court members in relation to the district's transitional bilingual grant for the twenty twenty three twenty four school year. Now this is where you guys are going to be asked to use language and you're using descriptive and elaboration language. And so you are going to explain terms such as multilingual learner, newcomer and LTEL with a partner. So with that, what's going to happen is I'm going to give you guys a little bit of background knowledge. So building background is essential for our multilingual students instructionally. And that's what I'm doing right now with you guys is I'm going to help you kind of build a little background to the terms that we use. And for example, we're going to preview some of those terms together and then you're going to be able to know and understand that as Michelle goes through them. Now how that's going to happen is through your use of language specifically, you are going to be repeating these terms after my command to give you that practice. But you're also going to notice that I've used visuals on the slides and in the terms that you're going to get here so that you have access to the content. Because it was mentioned earlier, you know, our students struggle with that academic language and one way we can provide access is by making it comprehensible and that is through the use of visuals. With that, we're going to move to the first term. So this is our first term. It's multilingual learner. You'll notice that the prefix is multi and so that means many. So pointing that out as the teacher is important to our multilingual students because working on prefixes and suffixes is essential for them to understand the terms. So they can use that as their reading decoding if they're going through. Now with that, multilingual learner, this term is new because it comes from VIDA. It's a can do philosophy. As Michelle mentioned, our students come in with a lot of access and we want to honor that with the term multilingual versus EL. So EL is the old term that was used and it, you might have heard ELL, English Language Learner. Those terms kind of have a deficit based connotation to them. And so as the change in the way we look at language, that's where that multilingual learner comes in. Now the next part of this is we have multilingual learners are students who are developing proficiency in multiple languages. So that word developing proficiency is important because they are working through basically trying to acquire the language to where they can show that they know and understand. So if we look at our image up on the board, you can see we have multiple students with different languages. And then again here, it down here, this is the proficiency levels that students will be basically assessed at using the VIDA assessment. Now for you guys, I want you guys, I'm going to say the word multilingual and then I'm going to point to you and I'm going to ask you guys to practice seeing the term. So the purpose of this is so that you are using that language. So multilingual. Perfect. I'm going to say it one more time. Multilingual. There we go. So that's our first term. Now the next term is newcomer. So this is a, the definition for newcomer. So the US Department of Education defines newcomers as any foreign born students and their families who have recently arrived in the US. Now, when we think about a newcomer, the word new, right, prefix helps us understand that that means, oh, they might be arriving from another country. And so if we look at this, students who have been enrolled in US schools, sorry, for fewer than two years and who score a two point oh or below on the VIDA screener are designated as newcomers in our district. So I'm going to ask you guys again to practice. I'm going to say newcomer. I'm going to point to you and I want you to say it. So newcomer. And I'm going to do it one more time. Newcomer. There we go. Now we've practiced that term. Next, what's going to happen is we're going to go to this last term. We only have three terms. So the last term that we have is long-term English learner. So an English learner, EL, students who have been enrolled in US school for five or more years and have not been reclassified as proficient, sorry, as fluent English proficient. So if we look at that, these are students who've been in our school system and for five or more years. And that's going to designate them as an LTEL and that is the acronym I'm using. Okay. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to say LTEL. I'm going to have you guys say LTEL. Okay, LTEL. Okay, let me say it one more time. LTEL. Perfect. So we have practiced this together just a little bit. Now you're going to do a little independent practice. So I'm going to pass out these terms to you guys and what I'm going to ask you to do is you're going to unflip them. And hold on a second. Michelle's going to pop those out to help me. So as she's getting those, you're going to see that I have the term and the definition. And what I want you guys to do is take a moment to match the term with the definition. No, I don't have a time. But what you can do is give yourself patterns back. I noticed. Okay. So now for our task two. This is going to be our second task. What's going to happen? I want to keep these sorted. But now what you're going to do is you're actually going to be paired up. So I'm just going to go based off of where you're sitting. Okay. So I'm going to have you two be pairs. I'm going to have you two be pairs. I'm going to have you two be pairs. But I don't want you to start talking yet because I want to show you what you're going to do. So you're going to have your term and this is where you're practicing the language, right? So I've got multilingual learner and then you have the definition. So you are going to turn to your neighbor and you're going to practice saying the term and the definition. Now, if you don't know the definition, it's okay if you utilize the sentence stem that I have right up on the board. So sentence stems are essential for our multilingual students. They help develop that academic language. Because a lot of our students, they know a lot more than what they can say. That output comes last. And so that's where if I have multilingual student, my stem is a multilingual student is a student who is sometimes referred to as an English learner. Okay. So I'm going to have you guys practice one person. So you can decide an A, B, A, B, A, B. You can decide who goes first, A or B. Okay. I'll give you guys a moment of practice. Okay. So see, did everybody get a chance to practice? Yep. Okay. So what we're going to do is this is one way. We would practice whole group. So you guys did a little independent. We also did a little bit of partner. And now this is going to be a whole group. Okay. So here's our first term. Now, if I was going to do this, I would have you guys share this out loud with me. So you would coral respond. Okay. Now, the one thing I want you guys to think about, and this is the intentionality that happens when you're teaching multilingual students, is how many times have I asked you to say the term? How many times have I had you to repeat the sentence stem with your partner? But then again, I'm going to do it one more time because that word is a, is a descriptive elaboration language function. So I want you guys to practice that academic language and that's what our students need. So to practice, a multilingual learner is a student who, and then if I point to you, you guys could read the first bullet point on the card. Okay. So we'll practice with this one. A multilingual learner is a student who. There we go. Aye. I heard people say it. Now the next term, we're going to practice with this one. A newcomer is a student who. So a newcomer is a student who. There we go. Yeah. And then our last one is going to be an LTEL. So an LTEL is a student who, I'll point to you. Okay. So this is just one way. We have previewed vocabulary that you're going to need to know and understand and we built some background knowledge for you so that when Michelle presents, you'll have a better understanding. But always when we teach second language learners, we are going to be going back to our content and language objectives. So hopefully this will go. And the question is, did we meet our language goal? And this is essential for teachers to make sure that their instruction is focusing on that language practice, not only the content. Because the content is the what, the language is how, right, we communicate what we know. So did we explain terms such as multilingual learner, newcomer, LTEL with a partner? Give me a thumbs up if we did it. Side thumbs if you're not quite sure. Thumbs down. And this is to check and for some understanding. Perfect. Okay. We'll be a quiz a little bit later. Yeah. All right. So this policy or this presentation relates to school bar policy twenty one ten and an RCW that outlines the responsibilities of the school board. In essence, this policy addresses the summer rights obligations that the district is responsible for ensuring that we implement. First is that we identify students in need of English language development. In order to do this, we use the VIDA language assessment. This is an assessment that is used naturally across forty one different states. We are also responsible for providing new language development services with qualified trained staff for all of our multilingual students, including those who are also served in special education and across all special education programs. So even our students in DLC may need language development services. Well, we also are responsible for providing meaningful access, meaning that we need to ensure that all of our multilingual students have access to grade level standards without unnecessary segregation. So we're not going to put all of our multilingual students in a special school or in a special classroom by themselves. We have to integrate them into the general education classroom and use instructional strategies so that they can access grade level standards. We also need to provide language access and communication to parents in the language that they prefer. We get this information from the home language survey when students enroll with us. And then finally, we are required to evaluate the effectiveness of our program. The federal government tells us that we need to evaluate our program on three different criteria. One is our program based on sound educational theory and research. Two is our program effective in teaching students language skills. And three, do we sufficiently staff and provide resources to provide to the program? So hopefully you see aspects of all three of those criteria represented in our presentation tonight. So you may be wondering about exactly how many multilingual students we support in the Sumner Bunny Lakes School District. In this slide, you can see that our population has really grown over the last several years. In fact, it's increased steadily over the past three years. So when I started here in Sumner Bunny Lakes School District eight years ago, we had about thirty five students and now we're at sixty nine twelve. So it's doubled in the time that I have been there. Our composition of multilingual students has also changed. So we are serving many more newcomers than ever before. Many of whom are students from Russia and Ukraine. A common question that we are often asked are, what are the most common languages spoken by our students and families? So Spanish is our top language spoken by sixty percent of our multilingual students. Followed by training in Russian. I want to point out the yellow slice on this pie chart. This represents the other category. So there are thirty seven languages spoken by thirteen percent of our multilingual students. Often this is just one student and family. Or a language group. So as you can see, translating material is challenging for us. Our goal is to exit students within five years of entering the program so that they don't become LTELs. Do you remember that term, LTEL? Let's go back and review. What does LTEL stand for? Tell the person that was assigned to you as your partner. As a reminder, LTEL stands for English learner. Right, right. So how are we doing on our exit rate book? In twenty twenty two, we exited point six percent of our students. We saw a small increase last school year. We're up to seven point two. You might be wondering, why are we just doing two years worth of data? And the reason for that is we have a change in the assessment. So we now use the VIDA assessment. It's a much more rigorous assessment than was previously used. So it's a little bit like comparing apples and oranges where it's working at the past two years ago. We are really working to improve that exit rate. So here's how our numbers break down by school. I'm going to talk about this in a little bit more detail in the following slides. In our first column are the total number of multilingual students in each building, followed by the number of newcomers in the second column or the third column, I should say, the number of long-term ELs. And you'll see that the number of long-term ELs is much higher in our secondary schools and that's because it takes five more years for students to be classified as an LTEL. And then the number of students who also qualify for special education services as well. So our LTELs are comprised thirty four percent of our total ML student population. And that is a number that is too hot. We're working We're working very hard to reduce. Um, the highest percentage of LTELs will be found in our middle schools, which seventy-three percent of our all students who qualify for services considered LTELs. Whereas that number falls slightly to sixty-five percent once we hit high school. So we are exiting few kids. Um. Seventy-nine percent of our LTEL students are Spanish-speaking students. So that tells us that that is a population of students that we need to really target and use, um, some better work with. And then of our LTEL students, twenty-four percent also qualify for special education services. So they're coming to us with some really intensive needs. So why are we so concerned with LTEL stats? It is because there is a correlation with poor, longer-term academic outcomes. Students who are LTELs are less likely to graduate with poor attendance, have lower grades, and lower test scores on all the different tests you can imagine. They're also less likely to take the more rigorous courses that we offer, AP, etc. What we're finding is that our LTEL students develop social language, um, but they really are not giving the academic language that they need in order to be successful in class and on the state test. And we are concerned, again, that this is a growing population for us. As we look at the SBA scores, the, um, data on the left is the ELA assessment, and the data on the right is MAP assessment for all the grade levels that we assess on SBA. And when you look at the blue column, that represents the overall district. The, uh, green columns represent students who qualify for ML services. So as you see here, um, there's not much difference between literacy and math performance. And that is because actually the math test actually requires a lot of language proficiency. And so again, that academic language is a real challenge for some of our students. So we're finding that students, in order to be centered on SBA, really have to meet that threshold to exit from, uh, the program and really have really strong language skills. So now I wanna transition and talk a little bit about, uh, resources and, uh, staffing. So our multilingual program is funded by three different, uh, sources. The first is the federal Title III, uh, grant. And this grant isn't, uh, really focused on professional learning. It funds a portion of our ML TOSA salary. Our transitional bilingual grant is a state grant, not a competitive grant. Um, it is something that is given to us based on the number of multilingual students that we have enrolled in our district. The more students we have, the more money we get. Majority of this grant pays for salaries. Um, a very small portion of this, uh, grant goes to curriculum, family engagement, and communication about multilingual program. More than eighty-five percent of this grant goes to salaries. And then, um, these past two years, we've been given additional funding through the basic ed, um, funding source to really support professional development for teachers, so that they can learn instructional strategies to support students in the general education classroom. Because we know that the majority of the students' day is going to be spent in the general education classroom, learning grade level standards, and we want that to be as effective as possible. And we also know that when teachers use strategies for multilingual students, that they are also benefiting native English speakers as well. Uh, in terms of staffing, um, multilingual funding supports both certified and, uh, classified staff at the elementary level. We're funding point-one of intervention teacher and one hour per day per eight multilingual qualified students. Uh, the intervention teachers mainly are spending their time overseeing the work of the parent educators. Parent educators at elementary are largely the folks that are delivering the services, and the services of parents are delivering are really, um, what we call designated ELD, so they're differentiated by language. Look up for students focused on language development goals. At the middle school level, we don't have any certified staff that are funded by ML, but we do have parents at a ratio of one hour per day per eight, per, for six students. And then at high school, Suzie mentioned that she was the multilingual coordinator at Sumner High School last year. We are thrilled that this year we now have that, um, position at both Byne Lake and Sumner High School. That's a basically one period release. And the role of the person, um, is to oversee the progress of all of the multilingual students. So they are in charge of the assessments, they help ensure that, uh, newcomers are enrolled in the most appropriate classes. These, uh, coordinators are working with other teachers to understand the specific instructional moves that are going to be most beneficial to our multilingual students. They're also helping to build a culture, um, for serving multilingual learners. Um, it's really incredible to see the work that's been happening, um, at both buildings to really build this culture around multilingualism at both schools. Uh, the multilingual coordinator also oversees the parent educators that are provided, um, support for our ML students at school. District-wide, Suzie is our, she's written on special assignment. She is our one person who is spending one-hundred percent of her time, um, supporting ML all day, every day. Um, point-one of my salary is paid for by ML, and we also have point-two of, uh, uh, secretarial support to support communication, um, and some of the, uh, data tracking, uh, that is necessary for compliance for this program. So what's working well? Um, we're thrilled that at elementary, we now have a designated, um, English language development curriculum that we can use, that's very, that allows us to differentiate for students based on their individual language levels for reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Blended learning program, students spend a little bit of time on the computer, and they spend a little bit of time with parent educators in face-to-face language development lessons. Uh, we're in year two of implementation of that curriculum. At elementary, we have many teachers who have received, uh, GLAD training. That is the training where teachers learn instructional strategies to use in a general classroom that we use across the student's day to help them access grade level standards. And our teachers really do a phenomenal job of implementing these. Every summer, we train a group of teachers. We spend six days, um, going through the training. Two days are theory and a research, and four days they get to see a master teacher working with a group of students, implementing these strategies for about four hours per day. And it is what many teachers saw as the most powerful professional learning they have ever done. The great way to de-privatize practice, and they always seem very inspired. Just in a classroom yesterday, where a teacher who had gone through training, uh, over the summer was implementing strategies, and it was just incredible to see. Um, her both having the learners, she had six of them really thriving in her classrooms, very effective. Um, we're very excited about the new coordinator position at high school that I talked about earlier. Um, in earlier presentations, you heard about the heritage Spanish program for earning Spanish speakers that is happening now at both high schools. It's just one strategy where we can really value students' own language and help them rest. You know, that students who are literate in both languages tend to do better. Um, so that's important as we think about how we really support that group of LTEL students that we're really worried about. Coming soon is a new class at, um, high school level that will be considered CTE credit. Students will be able to, um, earn, um, certification in translation and interpretation that's high in the field. Um, so we're excited for that. Um, tonight you heard about Ariel, Ariely, and the Latinx parent advisory group that she does convene that is giving us really important feedback. And, um, the KPTC partnership where we're providing enrichment programs, um, for the students on our Latinx students. So our opportunities, uh, you heard about our concerns around LTEL progress. In order to address that, we're really working to build the capacity of our teachers to support ML students, particularly at the secondary level across students, uh, entire school day. We really want to increase the number of secondary teachers who are sign-up trained, so that we know that whatever classroom a student gets, uh, assigned to, that they're going to be able to access the standards, because we're using effective strategies. Uh, we're also working to really enhance our services, where we're providing that really differentiated, um, instruction that is really focused on language development and really focused on students' particular language levels , um, for the four domains that we're really focused on, reading, writing, speaking, listening. Um, and at middle school, we're looking at, um, improving our service delivery models. And you probably noticed when our staffing, we don't have any certified staff, um, at middle school focused on ML. So we're looking at our resources and how we might, um, allocate services a little bit more effectively, really targeting that LTEL population and that bubble of students that is really sitting at that level. And then finally, a piece of feedback that we received, um, loud and clear from that, uh, parent group that Ariely led, is that we really need to strengthen our communication with families about how we are delivering multilingual services and how students, um, are, um, learning the language. So we are working closely on figuring out how to do that more effectively. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Suzie to wrap things up. Okay? Well, and the one thing we wanna think about is, um, the benefiting parties. So students who are in these programs, they benefit by enhancing their cognitive skills. They expand their career opportunities and hopefully prepare them to be global citizens, right? Um, educators benefit from these programs by providing opportunities for professional learning. They can grow in their practice and learn how to support all students, not just multilingual students. Um, they also are gonna expand their cultural competence and hopefully foster an innovative teaching method that supports, again, reiterate, all students. Um, and the compute, uh, community, sorry, benefits from this, uh, program by promoting cultural diversity, right? Facilitating communication and fostering a deeper understanding of different cultures and perspectives among its members. We'd love to answer any questions that you might have about multilingual program.
Just to be a comment, I think that this exercise at the beginning, as simple as it was, is very effective for us to support whatever it is. Now that we want to work a social event or a university store, and somebody approaches us and brings up the school district, it gives us things that we can talk about that are going on in the district and actually use the correct terms, um, especially the acronyms.
Uh, there were a large influx of, of these people that came in the federal way where I grew up. And there were, um, many of these students that showed up in the class, that really spoke no English. And some of the students, within two years, I mean, it was incredible. They had great friend groups, they spoke very well, um, they knocked it out of the park. But some of the kids languished, like this thirty-four percent here. I don't know what the number was back then, but I always thought that what what a big difference it was for these students that, um, seemed to really connect with people. And it was almost like, I don't, I know the technical term, it's not playground English, but people that had a more outgoing personality, made friend groups, practiced their English whenever and wherever they could, no matter how it sounded, right? Um, versus the more shy ones that remained in these programs, and we went to high school years later. I never even saw them in high school. They stuck with each other in their, in their language groups and with their culture. Um, and I, I sometimes wonder if they struggled after high school. Uh, but I, what kinds of research is out there that really can help these thirty-four percent of kids that are still struggling five years after this with their English acquisition?
Um, yeah. All right. So, um, there are a number of factors that, um, influence students' progress. Um, certainly, you know, repetition is super important and helpful. Um, we've talked to OSPI, we've asked, you know, what are other districts doing that are getting, you know, different results? And one thing, uh, keeps coming back, which is effective instruction based on language development standards that really is targeted at that academic language. So it gets to intentionality around that academic language, making sure that students have speaking opportunities throughout their school day, so that they get that repetition. And like Suzie demonstrated at the very beginning of the presentation, it's important for us not to just teach content, but to teach specific language, um, related, or how specifically language-related goals. It's important to do both. We also know that students who are more fluent in their home language tend to do better. So if I am bilingual and I, um, am fluent and I'm a great reader and writer in both Spanish, if that is my home language, and, um, I'm running English, that I'm more likely to make faster progress.
Yeah, I'll just add, I think, uh, that progress, you'll see more growth happen when all, like, the language development is happening throughout the day, not just in one specific period. And so that is that mainstream, the core classes that is a focus. And so, um, we'll see, because of the intentionality in the practice of the language, that development happened at a faster rate. We think about language acquisition, it typically takes roughly five years to acquire the language and be fluent. And so that's where that five years comes into play. And that is where we have to be specific about, like, comparing the class language that we need to teach the students, um, and not just in their ELD class. Yeah, language development class.
I always just think of the topic right here. You know, when I was trying to learn that language, it's eight hours a day, it was repetition, weren't it? The other thing that was, that I got on board was learning how to read the language. And that's why I, like, was, uh, since I saw last, I speak. I mean, that was the only way I could do it in my mind, was Korean language, and that was just tough, and I struggled. But if I couldn't read it, I mean, if I could read something, on and on and on and on, that's all picked up. But, yeah, it is. That's what I said, it's just shocking. It's a song, and about a whole lot of time, I think, just dealing with that, and I had to go to another classroom, and I'm like, you said, you want to scroll? I could have a little hallway. But, but, and repetition, repetition, be able to read it, that's the only way I could do it.
Thank you all so much. Taking our creation, we have two reports in our folders, one from the learning experience on my morning. The second is paper number sixteen, February, May. Uh, regarding Mountain View, Mellet School Edition, and remodel. Important discussion.
Second question, and it doesn't have to be answered right now, but I want to just bring it up for discussion. Um, and it's regarding our policies centered around the legal requirements for when we post our school board meeting agendas, and also how that dovetails with public comment, both in-person, virtual, and written comment. Uh, we have a timeline which we have the agenda for public to see prior to the meeting. We also have a timeline that we have for cutoffs, we're signing up for public comments, uh, so that people can come speak about the agenda. And sometimes, uh, we run into situations where those two don't line up, where the agenda is posted after the cutoff. Um, and I'm wondering how we can maybe talk about or go look into and maybe come back to a future discussion? How do we make those two policies work better together? Uh, because for this evening tonight, I have a few community members who chatted with me yesterday, and wanted to read the agenda. and wanted to read the agenda, but also wanted to sign to speak longer. Of course, those two things didn't happen. Bring that up for a discussion, start the moment. It's policies from the committee or it's something we need to look into that address.
I've had similar comments, so I think it was a good people to look at. And I don't know, I know that the minimum for posting the agenda is 24 hours. And so we could certainly, in a policy, and that's a 48, you know, to make it.
That's a law, the 24 hours.
The 24 hours, but we could certainly in a policy say we want it to be out there 48 hours. But I guess it would be really, yeah, discussions back in the policy to maybe figure out which one would work best. Or where you basically make the cutoff for the public speaking 24 hours as well. But then that might give your team enough time to do some follow-up with them to get them, you know, the email that they need to get, so. I think it's about a point.
I recognize there's a lot in the way of us, right? And so I just thought I would make it work.
Next morning is December 13th. We'll begin at 6:00 PM here in the central office boardroom. Rick, what I've heard us? Good.